I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk may have the roll call, please.
Councilman Twining?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Here.
Mayor Burns?
Here.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Here.
Councilman Gruel?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Okay, tonight's invocation will be read by Huntington Beach Fire Chief, or Huntington Beach Fire and Police Chaplain Roger Wing. Hello, okay. Heavenly Father, you tell us in your word, for the Lord gives wisdom, from his mouth come knowledge and understanding. And as we begin tonight's city council meeting, we want to tap into that wisdom and knowledge that you so graciously and willingly provide to us. We pray for each of our city council members as they deal with the difficult issues of our city and those that are on the agenda this evening. May you impart your wisdom and discernment to each member of our city council. We pray for peace, unity, and harmony, and ask that you would give them guidance to be able to make the best decisions to move our city forward. Lord, we pray for all those who would be providing their input and sharing their comments at the podium this evening. Help them and guide clearly, calmly, and concisely, and with utmost dignity and respect. We ask your blessing, Lord, on each of our council members, our city attorney, city manager, treasurer, city clerk, police and fire chiefs, department heads, and all of our faithful and committed city employees who work so diligently in support of our city council. And as the weather warms up and the tourists begin to come, we pray that Huntington Beach have a enjoyable and prosperous spring and summer season. Bless our meeting this evening, and may your peace and wisdom guide all that occurs tonight. And we ask this in your wonderful and blessed name, Jesus. Councilmember Gruel will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
All right, each city council member, two-minute time limit. Would anybody like to make a comment?
I'd like to make a comment, mayor.
Chad.
So, for those who have been following the Symphony of Flowers agreement, there have been some concerns raised about the solvency of their parent company, Cavalier. And so, out of an abundance of precaution, I want to take that as an opportunity to renegotiate even better terms with a financial framework that guarantees no financial risk to the city. And so, before they step a single foot into our park, I want to see financial guarantees in the form of a performance bond. And without that, I'll be the first one to put my foot down and be the first to stand in the way and be the wall that further progress bashes up against. And so, that said, I do want to say that I do believe Symphony of Flowers has an artistic, family-friendly event that can provide for our city and provide much-needed revenue to our city. So, I just wanted to put that out there for those of you that have been following. We hear you, and we're going to put the financial precautions in place to put zero risk to the city through the form of a performance bond. At least, that's what I will advocate for personally.
Anyone else? All right. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
We do have supplemental communications. We have three communications. One for number seven. On the consent calendar, we have the new item 25-266, and for item number 17.
Okay. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We have 11 speakers signed up.
Okay. Before we get speaking, I've got an additional admonishment that I want to read to the crowd. "Thank you all for coming tonight. At the last few council meetings, behavior by members of the public have, has become unruly and has created such a disturbance that the meetings have had to be recessed and members of the public removed. It got so bad at the last meeting, we had to recess and ask the public to leave. As the mayor and chair of the meeting, I'm advising the public that disruptive behavior that leads to disturbing or breaking up the meeting will not be tolerated. I'm also advising that the penal code provides that every person who, without authority or willfully disturbs or breaks up a meeting may be guilty of a misdemeanor. Yelling from the seating gallery, making crude gestures, or use of foul language at the podium from the seating area or within the city council chambers is considered disturbing the meeting. If you want to be heard, please come to the podium for public speaking during public hours or fill out a blue card request to arrange a meeting with staff or council members, or both. If it is determined that your behavior is disruptive to council conducting the city business, police are prepared to escort you out or remove you and may lead to an arrest. Thank you for your cooperation. It'll be greatly appreciated." And with the standard proper decorum at the city council meeting is imperative in the order for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to the city's business. Public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the council's business will not be tolerated. Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting this meeting, and enforcement action will be taken for violation of this law. At this time, the city council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request-to-speak form delivered to the city clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants reducing the time allowance. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by conducting the city council's administrative, contacting the city council's administrative assistants at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire city council Okay, we're going to give everybody two minutes, and we're going to ask you to line up in that hallway after the, behind the podium, behind the fire captain there, or battalion chief. Where are you, Marty? Battalion chief? Yeah, battalion. So, you guys, and we're going to call 20 at a time, right, clerk? Oh, yeah, it's only 11, so we're going to call 11 at a time. And, uh... Clerk, go ahead and call those 11.
When your name is called, please line up outside of the auditorium, and the officer will direct you on how to proceed. Mr. Amory Hanson, Dean Ryan, Charlie Jackson, Russ Neal, Ken Inoue, Chris Reenie, Libby, Brian Shaver, Antoinette Delapural, Tim Geddis, Brenda.
First speaker, please start.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, my city council people, and members of the city of Huntington Beach, my name is Antoinette Delapural. I'm going to make a little quote here. The difference between ordinary and extraordinary is that little extra. Jimmy Johnson football quote. Why I'm here today is on November the 11th, 2024, last year, that was Veterans Day. I've lived in Huntington Beach for about 13 years now. On November the 11th, Veterans Day, I received a citation. I had to be out of town, and our whole complex was being fumigated. I called Caltrans, as well as the Huntington Beach Police Department. They said, "Don't worry about it, it's a holiday." To my dismay, and I'm shocked, because my dad fought in World War II, you guys do not celebrate or honor Veterans Day anymore. I was really dismayed. I paid the bill, $49. I did try to fight it, I lost. And because they said they didn't have enough evidence, I didn't record my conversations with the Huntington Beach Police Department, but I did call Caltrans, as well as Huntington Beach. I'm just very saddened that we, as one of the most famous conservative cities in the United States of America, that we do not recognize or celebrating Veterans Day anymore. And I just happened to find out because of this ticket, it was (beep). Stop January the 24th, I didn't know.
Antoinette, can you fill out a blue card, please? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. I would like to say something about the invocations, which are the most important words said at any meeting. Jeremiah 10:23 tells us, "It is not in man who walks to direct his paths." Therefore, it is necessary for us to invoke God's assistance when making serious and weighty decisions. An invocation is God-centered, not man-centered. It is not meant to pander to one element of the community or another, and is not an opportunity to lobby the council. It is a serious prayer for God's help. The invocations which have been given by our chaplains follow these guidelines and have been exemplary, and they are appreciated. Thank you, God bless you, and good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Dean Ryan. I'm the founder of Real Deal Media. And I haven't been to a library in about 30 years. So, being here is, it makes me feel young again, like a little boy. But when I used to come as a child, it was after school, because I wasn't very inspired by school. I went to eight years of Catholic school, and I feared for my life every day in a way. And, uh, but what was thrilling was coming to the library and discovering things like Mad Magazine and the history of music and books, and really discovering through creativity my individuality, which later in life it got me to get into broadcast journalism and media and film, and really gave me the opportunity to create and dream of possibilities through reading. And then you get older, and life happens. As John Lennon said, "Life is what happens when you're busy making other plans." But in the past three years, I've been living in Arizona, and over the last summer, I was moving to Texas, where I was caught in Hurricane Burl, and I was displaced, and I lost pretty much everything. So, I came back here to Orange County, where I was born and bred, and very depressed and destitute in a way, and I felt very worthless, sense of self-worth. But coming to this library, which I never knew about growing up, has been just a real godsend. And the people that work here are just incredible people. And, uh, and now I come here all the time. And I just wanted to thank the library and the staff here in the city of Huntington Beach for making me feel home again when I lost the home. And I think that's important, and it's a very rare (beep).
Thank you, sir. All right, next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of item 16, the mayor and councilman McKeon's item to create a milestone payment policy. As Huntington Beach begins new infrastructure projects, it is vital to ensure such projects are paid for at appropriate times to ensure Huntington Beach is getting a return on these investments. This item will also ensure a fair deal for the Huntington Beach Performing Arts Center that I support. Once again, I urge a yes vote on item 16. Thank you.
With only 11 speakers tonight, how few do we need to get our full three minutes? So, just over a year ago, in February 2024, city council approved almost $3 million to cap the oil wells in the Civic Center parking lot. Now, they are asking for about a 33% increase to finish the job. The agenda item has no backup to explain what this cost increase is supposed to cover. I recommend tabling this item until there's a full explanation of exactly what was overlooked in the original contract. At this point, it seems the city is being held hostage for a $900,000 fee to finish the job. This may be a reasonable fee for some circumstances that couldn't have been known before the task was underway, but there's no documentation of that. Until such time as the proper documentation is provided, the council should be good stewards of the public funds and delay this decision. You are not here to rubber stamp for whatever funds you are asked for. Regarding Agenda Item 16, there is no backup information for the proposed milestone payment policy submitted by the mayor and Mayor Protem, so there's no way to understand what is prompting this policy. As a former major subcontract administrator for the government defense contracts, I'm very familiar with milestone payment structure. In my experience, the payment structure of any contract is normally part of the negotiation process, so I'm trying to understand the need for this agenda item. Have HB contract negotiators been forbidden from using milestone payments in their past negotiations? If so, officially changing policy to allow for this possible structure is a good thing. However, what I expect is more likely is that there currently is no restriction on negotiating milestone payments. Is this policy change just for show, or is it truly necessary? And finally, for those at home, vote yes on Measures A and B. Allow librarians to do their job to select a wide variety of books, and allow parents to do their job to select the books that are right for their children. Thank you.
Good evening. Chris Reenie, Huntington Beach native. Thank you, Councilman Williams, for acknowledging the elephant in the room. The Journal de Montreal reported on March 28th that Cavalier, the parent company for Symphony of Flowers, is insolvent. They are out of money. The case des Jardins du Plateau Montréal has threatened to liquidate Cavalier's assets since March 10th, and Cavalier has alleged to transfer over $225,000 of assets without creditors' knowledge. Now, where is the financial responsibility in signing a contract with a defaulted company that doesn't even clean up their own performance venue? That being said, we live in a time when it is dangerous to speak the truth. Indeed, radicals seek to trash the American way of life. Freedom and liberty seems to threaten them for some reason. Against these attacks to our constitutional republic stands a model for self-determination and public-private partnership. It is the repository of wisdom. We're in it right now. It's the library. I urge everyone in this room to vote yes and yes on Measures A and B on June 10th to amend Huntington Beach's charter and protect our library. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Shower. Two minutes with 11 speakers, not enough. But I live and have had a business in HB for 30 years. And during the last year, my vehicle has been ticketed 11 times and impounded for the 72-hour parking lot. But I have irrefutable iPhone video proof that clearly demonstrates that the vehicle being driven each event, and those videos were witnessed by the police lieutenant. I have since uncovered a very well orchestrated broad daylight scheme used to ticket and tow vehicles that's designed to make it impossible to challenge in court, and it costs $840 to get your vehicle back on the same day. The city contracts with a citation processing center, so responsibility can be blamed on each other, and you can't get anywhere with either side. The processing center has 15 days to mail your citation to you, and it takes exactly six days for that citation to reach your home, which totals 21 days, which is the amount of time that you have to contest it, or only a few hours left on that day that you received it or you lose by default. It costs $25 just to view the proof of wrongdoing, and the policy states that you are guilty until you can prove your innocence. To speak with anyone at the processing center requires you to leave a message, and they are supposed to return your phone call within two business days, but they never do, and their phone system disallows you from calling back until after those two days. Representatives and managers are not allowed to give out any information whatsoever, including which courthouse to use. Yet, in the absence of any proof of wrongdoing, but with irrefutable proof of innocence submitted, I have repeatedly been found guilty by the employees of the Citation Processing Center that you must pass through before your evidence or before your chance to use a courtroom. However, you cannot submit video or appear in person. Against all odds, I was miraculously able to get a court hearing because they require the proof of service must be served in person, but they refused to provide any name or address other than a P.O. box in the citation processing form that's required for the clerk to use. It's a double-sided, which is prohibited, and which requires it to be single-sided, which is something they won't do. I was able to prove my innocence in court, but I had to, I had the prosecution, or had the prosecution shown up, they would have disqualified me for failure to prove the proof of service was delivered in person.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Now for something completely different. I was looking into Chris Carr from Carr Park, and it occurred to me that his heroism was over 60 years ago. His story is an inspiration to hear, but there is no plaque at Carr Park. Maybe we should consider making a plaque for Chris Carr and at the same time, find a more recent Huntington Beach hero to memorialize. There must be a process, let's use it. But back to why I was looking into Chris Carr, I wanted to show that the MAGA-style plaque would not honor Chris Carr. But instead, I found a cause that all Huntington Beach residents could work together on. When the renovation of Carr Park removes the island and makes a bigger lake, that would be the time to add a new hero and to remember Chris Carr with a plaque at the same time. Thank you.
Yeah, sir, just so you know, clarification, that is already in the program. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Tim Geddis at the proverbial end of school's location. First of all, I want to rise in protest again for reducing the time at public comments to two minutes when there's less than a dozen speakers announced. That is just outrageous, and it is, I think, should be brought to the attention of the public and everyone at City Hall for the next meeting. Today is April Fool's Day, or as it refers to our city council members, all Fools' Day. If they continue to play the not-so-harmless policy pranks and perpetuate deceptive and dangerous hoaxes on the community, it is our residents who will be tricked. However, it will be the city council that continues to look foolish. I see that our MAGA graven image of Donald Trump substituting for our Mayor Protem last meeting has been sequestered, hopefully for good. One hopes for good. One could argue that his administration has been a bust insofar in uniting the country and easing the suffering of our citizenry. I hope you don't try to emulate that approach with our residents. Just because you have the power to be wrong doesn't mean you should exercise it. It is, please do not consider our remarks and public comments as intrusions to your ideological agenda, a symphony of protests, if you will. Now, where can the nice Protect HB folks apply for a grant under the Violence Against Library Supporters Act for MAGA harassment? This battle has gone on for far too long. Oh, and April Fool's.
Next speaker, please.
The recent events unfolding in our world have compelled me to address a matter of utmost urgency. As you may be aware, 14 countries have issued new warnings to their citizens regarding travel to America. The reasons behind these warnings are deeply troubling and demand our immediate attention. Reports have emerged of masked individuals clad in dark clothing seizing innocent people and forcibly detaining them in unmarked vehicles. These abductions are allegedly linked to the victims' political beliefs, and the situation has escalated to the point where even legal immigrants have been swept up and deported to prisons in El Salvador. The gravity of these events cannot be overstated, and the implications for our society is dire. We must not obey in advance. For the power of authoritarianism is often freely given. Instead, we must defend our institutions, safeguard our democracy, and actively participate in local and state elections. The warning signs are clear, and we must be diligent in safeguarding our freedoms and our values. We must be diligent in listening for dangerous words and be prepared to remain calm in the face of the unthinkable. We must embody patriotism and courage, setting an example for the future generations and demonstrating our unwavering commitment to freedom. Our collective actions and resolve will serve as a bulwark against the forces of tyranny. Let us stand together, united, and united in our commitment to justice, freedom, and the preservation of our democracy. Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Larry Sloane, and I'm actually speaking for Harry McGlothlin, who had submitted a supplemental letter with regard to the oil well abandonment funding. And it's to his knowledge, as far as he knows, the City of Huntington Beach does not own or operate any oil wells. Chevron owns most local mineral rights, including those the Huntington Beach Company, a major landowner of the city that is also wholly owned subsidiary of Chevron. They, or who they've ever sold the mineral rights to, is responsible for abandonment process and all its associated costs. If an operator becomes insolvent or deserts their idle wells, responsibility for the permanently sealing and closing these wells may fall to the state. If you have not already, if the city has not already thoroughly investigated this to every possibility, please table the funding request until you have ascertained that the City of Huntington Beach is indeed the legally responsible party. We don't need to be spending another nine hundred thousand dollars on a process that ought to be handled by the legal operator of the oil well or the state of California. Do your research. Do due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Kenny No Light, first of all, Councilman Gruel, wanted to thank you and welcome you. I appreciate the fact that you're wearing attire that's suitable for a member of your status. Thank you very much. I think we all agree that two of the responsibilities of City Council members is fiscal accountability and public safety. I believe when, before your term is up, this city will find that it's very possible we will be required to spend tens of million dollars on fines and activities that would have been avoided had a City Council acted in the best interest of the city. The collateral impact of not having these funds could be jeopardizing a public safety. As I've mentioned many times before, you, I've suggested we do a detailed review of the infrastructure, because we do not have the money to make all the improvements in the infrastructure that we need. We could put public safety at risk. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Idran Amaldonado, and I'm a resident here in Huntington Beach. I'm here today to urge you to take action towards making our city more walkable. Currently, I believe that our city streets prioritize cars over people, but a walkable city is about more than just sidewalks. It's about safety, health, and a stronger community. A walkable city is not only benefit in these areas, but many others as well, which I'll address shortly. Every year, over a hundred children are killed and twenty-five thousand are injured in car-heavy cities. Walkable streets with safe crossings and slower speeds save lives. No parent should have to worry about their child being hit just walking to school. In terms of health-related issues, car-dependent areas have higher asthma rates, obesity, and increased stress levels. When we design a city with walking in mind, we create a healthier place for everyone. From the financial standpoint, the average household spends sixteen percent of their income on transportation, nearly double the amount households in walkable cities spend. Investing in walkability can save families thousands of dollars each year. Economically, local businesses thrive in pedestrian-friendly areas. Studies show walkable streets increase retail sales by up to forty percent. A walkable city leads to more prosperous economy. This isn't just a theory, it's been done. Cities across the world have proven that small changes, better sidewalks, safer crossings, and mixed-use spaces lead to big benefits. I ask you to take the first step. Let's make our city where a place where people, not just cars, come first. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes public comments. Now, council members announce committee appointments. I've got some to announce real quick, along with the changes with the arrival of Andrew Gruel and the departure of Tony Strickland. Andrew Gruel will be appointed to the Historic Resource Board, the Personnel Commission, the Huntington Beach Council on Aging, the Huntington Beach Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Committee. Councilmember Twining will be going to Inner Governmental Relations Committee, and Association of California Cities, Orange County, and Association of California Cities, Orange County. Casey will be going downtown in beachfront ad hoc council committee, and Chad will be going to specific events. Anybody else? Don?
Mayor, I will be appointing Ann Palmer as my planning commissioner.
All right, thank you.
To the planning commission, I'd like to appoint Ryan Bloom. To the community and library services, Tisha Hussani. And to the finance commission, David Ciceron.
And for Public Works, I'll be appointing Panop Frousiakis.
Okay. Any others? All right. One, two, three, four reporting. I met with the Huntington Beach management teamsters. Oh, one, two, three, four. All right, anybody have A, B, one, two, three, four reporting? Butch?
Yeah, last Thursday, I attended the OCAG 2025 Annual Conference at the Richard Nixon Library. Items discussed included housing policy crisis, transportation, collaboration between cities, sober and group living homes, licensed and unlicensed, and enforcement actions. That's it.
And Mayor, last week, I too met with HBMT.
Yeah, I announced that a little early. It's right now openness and negotiation disclosures. So Chad and I both met with HBMT.
Mayor, I did as well with HBMT.
Anybody else? All right. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few items tonight. One item I would like to pull, an item on the agenda, twenty-five dash two sixty-six, the Civic Center Oil Well Abandonment Item, and we'll bring it back in the future.
That's it? What about?
And then, yes, then we have a few departments that are going to share information on their budget. We're going to start with Public Works Department, and our Public Works Director Chow Vu will provide the staff report.
Chow, real quick, before you start, so some community members have mentioned, you know, why don't you guys just demand a ten percent cut across every single department? That's the easy solution, of course, we're pursuing that angle and that option. However, we want to get transparent with the community and get down to the grander level and have every single department had come up in front of council like Chow's going to do right now for Public Works, walk the community through all the services they provide, and then banter back and forth on some options to reduce expenditures, while at the same time, where appropriate, pursue revenue-generating opportunities. So just want to set the record straight, clear the deck, and let you guys know that's our intent of what we're trying to do. So Chow, please go ahead. Thank you.
I'm waiting for my slide to get loaded right now. But I, thank you, Mayor, members of council. We want to talk about Public Works Department budget tonight. Public Works is the backbone of the city. We handle all the assets for the city. We handle the maintenance, the infrastructure. That's why we're considered the backbone of the city. I have my management team here tonight. Guys, can you please stand and be recognized? This is my management team. Thank you. Thank you. So our Public Works Department budget, overall, in terms of all funds, we have a hundred and forty-five million dollars. In that pie chart you see before you, personnel is for staff, labor, full-time, part-time, overtime, temporary. Operating expenses include utilities, purchased water, equipment, supplies, repairs, maintenance, training, professional services, contract services, insurance, and payments to other agencies. Capital expenses are capital improvements for equipment, for software, and vehicles. Our non-operating is debt service and depreciation, and that number is calculated by finance. Here we have our general fund budget. So out of the hundred and forty-five million that we have total, twenty-four million is general fund. That's seventeen percent of our overall budget. In the next slide, you'll see the revenue for our department that we generate. You'll notice that the pie before you is very colorful, and it's because we deal with multiple funding sources. We have at least ten, three of which are enterprise funds, seven are designated funds. We use general fund, AQMD, traffic impact fees, gas tax, Measure M, refuse, water, water master plan, sewer, artio rehab, grants, and restricted funds. The general fund portion, the fourteen million that you see there, comes from permit fees, inspection fees, leases, and franchise fees. That is our org chart you see before you. That is the Public Works Department. That is all of our staff. We have a total of two hundred and twelve full-time employees, thirty-eight part-time, and not only that, we are managing over a hundred contracts. These contracts consist of service contracts, maintenance contracts, professional contracts, engineering contracts, consultant contracts, and construction contracts. We produce so much work out of our department that we have a reputation of getting things done. As for efficiency, we look for opportunities in restructuring our department. We underfill positions. We upgrade positions. We combine titles. We consolidate crews and divisions. I will give you an example. Engineering and transportation used to be two separate divisions. They are now combined, and they have one person leading those two sections, and that person is Tom Herbell. He's our city engineer slash deputy director of Public Works. He oversees both divisions. So we constantly look at opportunities for restructuring our department, for efficiency and for cost savings. This is us in a nutshell. We have four divisions. We did have five, but now we've got four. Public Works delivers a wide range of services, and we're very unique because we not only have customers that are forward-facing with the public, we also have services provided for every single department within the city. Our administration department division provides essential support for managing customer service, the front counter, the public, customer service, contracts, records, budgeting, personnel, compliance. This division keeps us out of trouble. This division makes sure that we are spending correctly, our invoices are paid, and we're not in trouble with any of our granting agencies, that everything spent is eligible and accounted for. In engineering, which has both engineering and transportation, we have construction management, development services, engineering, design, compliance, the pavement plan, the CIP. We also process conditions of approval, plan check, permits required for the entitlement process of private development. Transportation is responsible for safe, efficient transportation when it comes to vehicles, pedestrians, transit services, and bicycles. We also oversee maintenance of all traffic control devices, pole lighting on city property, maintain a hundred and fifty traffic signals, fourteen thousand streetlights, parks, sports roads lighting, and we also manage contracts for traffic striping, signage, pavement, and curb markings. We provide traffic control planning for special events. Our maintenance operations division is responsible for citywide facilities, the fleet, the beach, landscaping, eleven hundred miles of streets, a thousand miles of sidewalks, thirty miles of alleys, beach path, bike paths, city parking lots, tree maintenance, irrigation, landscaping. At all city facilities, parks, meetings, road sides, we maintain seven hundred and sixty acres of parks. We also have a year-round graveyard shift for beach operations, seven days a week. The fire rings, the pier, we rake the sand every night. We're in charge of the bike paths, the parking lots, and trash removal. As far as fleet operations, we hire certified ASCs, certified mechanics that provide maintenance repair for nine hundred and five city vehicles. This includes large equipment, the fire apparatus, the paramedic vehicles, police vehicles, boats, ATVs, sweepers, dump trucks. And our last division, utilities, they operate, maintain the water system, the wastewater, which is sewer, our storm drain system. This includes groundwater, import water, reservoir operations, water quality testing, backflow testing, distribution line, main line, water meters. Our wastewater crews ensure that the city sewer lines and the sewer lift stations are always operational so that homes don't experience backups. Our crew manages the stormwater drainage and its channels to prevent flooding. Our operations and performance data. So to give you some facts about Huntington Beach, we are the largest beach city in Orange County, both in terms of population and landmass. Our landmass is twenty-eight square miles. Our population is just under two hundred thousand people. It takes a lot to run this city and maintain this great city. We receive about twelve thousand servers requests, not only from the public, but also in other departments within the city. We maintain two million square feet of building facilities. We maintain over three million square feet of landscaping. We're very proud of our fire department that has a class-one rating for their system. I want to mention that forty percent of their score comes from our department, from our water operations, based on our procedures, our programs, our policies, our practices, the practice of exercising and inspecting our fire hydrants. We help them get to that class, and if we don't do our part, it's very difficult for the fire department to do their part. So we are always partners together. This is my last slide. We also provide support for special events like the airshow, Surf City Nights, concerts. We provide clean, safe drinking water for our businesses and residents. We have over fifty thousand accounts within the city. We are considered a very large utility. We provide support to PD on homeless encampments. We deliver capital projects. We recently modernized the PD dispatch center. We chase after grants, and these are competitive grants. They are not an allocation. We have to compete statewide with other cities, and we landed. We were recently awarded nine million dollars in complete street from Caltrans, and in that scope, we will stretch every dollar. We will replace the surface, replace trees and sidewalks. That's in our scope for one of our largest capital projects that we received. We were just notified that we got another three point six million dollars to do Magnolia Corridor, so that's another award that we just received, and we'll bring it to council for CIP adoption. And in the right column that you see with the summary, thirty-five million is in our adopted budget for capital improvement program. This indicates that our City Council has made significant investment in our infrastructure, in our public facilities, in our long-term assets. So thank you to council for allowing us to continue doing good for the city. And that concludes my report. I'll ask any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chow. So one of my favorite things so far, being on council, was our Public Works tour to see how critical Public Works is to the city. It's really the gears that makes the city run. A lot of things they do is when people are sleeping at night, making sure the water's flowing, or beaches are clean. So with that, as such, Chow, such a critical, complex department with a lot of services, based on what you've seen as we're trying to balance our budget, what ideas do you have to, I guess, reduce expenditures, in your opinion, that we can pursue?
What we have proposed so far is reducing our zone maintenance. That means we're doing less maintenance and capital within our neighborhoods, so that will be something that we'll see less of, and that could result in, you know, more potholes and just complaints from residents.
And I talked to Travis about this earlier, so we're on a twelve-year paving cycle, so we've successfully gone through recently the first twelve-year cycle. So in talking with Travis, there's a possibility to kind of shift that paving schedule around slightly while we, in the next year or so, get our revenues up and plug that hole. But if there's certain streets that need to be paved that are critical, we can jump on that, of course, right away. So I want to, you know, clarify that, that's an option to kind of shift some of that timeline around, but we can always bring it back forward once we get our revenues up in the coming years. Is that correct?
That's correct. Instead of twelve zones, we've got twenty-four.
Right.
We will not ignore potholes within the city. We can still do spot treatment, if that's the case. We don't want cars damaged throughout our community. So there's still people here and staff to make repairs as needed.
What about, I know in the early to mid-two thousands, you guys outsourced several services. Is there a possibility to outsource further services to reduce expenditures potentially?
If anything, we're If anything, we're outsourcing even more people.
Okay.
We've lost people. Uh, we are increasing our budget when it comes to, um, subcontracting with engineering services, for example. We're bumping up our consultant costs, yes.
Is there a way to, um, and we'll talk about it later on the HON, but is there a way contractually to, to tighten up some of our contracts on the, the capital improvement project front, in your opinion? Or is that more state-regulated where it's, it's, it's tough to do that?
We alw- we, we always run our contracts through the city attorney's office. If there's anything to tighten up, we work with the city attorney's office on tightening any language. But the standards and the policies that we follow, we follow the public contracting code. We follow the Green Book when it comes to, uh, uh, paying our contractors. So we follow a lot of guidelines and policies and rules that are already in the practice of our, of our industry.
So in terms of the, the charter mandates that fifteen percent of the general fund is allocated towards you guys for infrastructure, right? Is there a number above that? I think you said it was like seventeen percent of the general fund. Is there a, potentially to, to move some monies around above that fifteen percent and re-prioritize certain capital improvement projects, maybe table them if they're not a priority in later years to also reduce the expenditure side? Is that a possibility?
I don't have that calculation for that fifteen percent general fund. That calculation is done by the finance department. Typically, every year, finance warrant gives a calculation based on a five-year rolling average, and they tell us how much, in terms of infrastructure, we can fund. This past year, we see nine point five million dollars in infrastructure. So it fluctuates every year.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor Protem, can I?
Yeah.
Just give you a little update. So as we work through the budget, um, that's a, that five-year rolling average is, is evaluated each year, um, every single year. And so we're evaluating that with our current circumstances. And we'll be, um, looking for opportunities to, um, of course, um, abide by the city's charter. Um, but then also, um, evaluate, um, where, um, we have the opportunity to ensure that we can have a balanced budget.
Perfect. And again, I, I've said this several times at the budget halls, is that, you know, we're an old city. We're a hundred and sixteen years old. And so right now, we're working on optimizing all of our assets. We're going through all of our leases, our hundred-and-one leases, to make sure that we're getting market rents. There's not leakage. All of our assets in the city, can we optimize them to their fullest potential, the equestrian center, metal arc areas like that? Revenues up over the coming years, and then reduce our expenditures in the meantime. And we might have to kind of shift some stuff around, like Chow mentioned, to get into that positive area where revenues are increasing. So this is all on the table. And Chow, on the revenue side, is there any other areas you see that we can maybe increase revenue on, through the Public Works, uh, Public Works Department?
What we're doing right now is we're leveraging with grants. We're very competitive, and like I mentioned, nine million.
Yeah.
We have another four point six million coming our way. That's significant.
Yeah.
And so when we leverage the grants, it means we can take the savings and put it towards another part of town.
Right.
So that's what we're doing right now in terms of looking for another revenue source.
You, you touched on it here too, like with the, with the paving. I mean, some of that grant money is actually going to paving as well too, right?
Yes.
We might have to shift our twelve-year paving cycle around slightly, but you can backfill it with grant money that you get.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Casey.
Thank you for the presentation. And, um, I did have a question. The Magnolia Corridor funding, where did you secure that from?
From Caltrans by way of SCAG and, um, which is a federal program. So OCTA was the agency that oversaw that process.
Okay, thank you. And, um, uh, we were monitoring social media, and I did see some people making comments saying we're having our dog and pony show by bringing these departments up here. Um, and I wanted to explain the reason our departments are coming up here is because people want to transparency. So we thought it was a good idea to bring the different departments and explain what they do, where the funding is, uh, secured from, where the funding's going, to get a better understanding. I know that I didn't understand this one. Before I was on council, I did take the, what's it called, Citizens Academy. I learned a little bit about how each department worked, but not to the extent that we have learned now. So what we are trying to do with these presentations is inform the community, show our strengths, our weaknesses, where we can improve, um, how we can ma- maximize our funding, where we can secure more funding. So the whole, um, idea from this was to be transparent, um, and for no other reason. So, um, what those comments are going out there, it's not true. We're not trying to just, I don't know, make you guys come up here, take your time from your family, waste your time. It is to inform the community. So thank you for that presentation, and, um, it helps a lot. For me, it's been very helpful. I mean, just the fact that you can explain, you guys go out, you secure the funding and use other, the fundings that you save for those specific projects towards somewhere else. I mean, those are creative ways to save funding, and I think it's helpful for everyone to know. Thank you.
Done.
Hey Chow, thank you. Um, Casey, you answered a couple of my questions, um, that Casey answered. But first off, congratulations on the condensation of your departments from five to four. It's a twenty percent reduction in departments. How did that articulate into headcount? Cause I, I know you said you've lost some people. I, I can't imagine it was a straight twenty percent reduction in headcount just because you've condensed departments. But was there any reduction because of now duplicate roles like Mr. Herbell's taken on?
Well, that, that has already been implemented. That was done last year. We implemented that this year.
Right. So when that, when you did that, was there a reduction in headcount by virtue of con- condensing the departments?
By one person, yes.
Okay.
One full-time person, yeah. So we continue to look at restructuring throughout the year. As employees resign, retire, get promoted, or go to another department, that's an opportunity for us to look within our operations. Can we cost train people? Can we consolidate? Can we move people around, upgrade, downgrade, things like that? So we look at that throughout the year.
Okay, at the start, what is the annual budget?
A hundred and forty-five million.
A hundred and forty-five, that's for?
Total.
Okay.
Operations only.
What was it last year, roughly?
Do you know that? I don't know what it was last year.
If you were to look at a five-line, a five-year grid, would you, would you say incremental increases year over year in the budget?
It's small, yes.
Okay. And, um, you answered the question, you know, I would imagine when your budget is one forty-five, and then if you obtain thirteen million in grants, like you said, you take that thirteen million because it's not part of the budget, and you allocated thirteen million dollar savings to another priority that wasn't budgeted because of your confinements with the one forty-five on the budget, right?
So that nine million, that's strictly capital. We don't take that and supplement our salaries with that.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. You, you utilize that. It's not budgeted. The one forty-five, you set your budget, you set your, your, uh, program, if you will, your, your projects. Then you go out and you successfully get grants. Congratulations. I mean, you must have a full-time grant writer or somebody who's highly capable?
We don't. We hire, it's, it's a mix. It's a mix of internal staff, depending on the complication of that grant. And then if, sometimes it's in-house, sometimes we hire a consultant. So the nine million, the thirteen that we got so far, was done by consultant.
That's, that's a worthy consultant. They're paying for themselves without.
Paying for your buck.
Without fail. I would try and replicate over and over. With that said, what I was saying is, so you have your hundred and forty-five million dollar budget. You, you attract ten million, twenty million, thirteen million, nine million. So now you, you have additional money. You can now spend that on projects and offset some of the expense because the new capital. And you spend it somewhere else.
I'm sorry.
Maybe I might, probably forming my question wrong, but I think Tom's got it. Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy, so what it is, when we have projects that we don't have funding for, we go to seek the funding. So it adds to our budget.
Yeah.
We don't replace money. So if we have a hundred and forty-five million dollars and we get a thirteen million dollar grant, it just means our budget goes up to thirteen million.
Exactly.
So I think that's what your question was, right?
Yeah. Probably poorly framed, but yes, now you have another thirteen million.
To do great stuff for the city.
Exactly, okay. And you also kind of answered the question as well. So you, you, one of the things you said, you're managing an enormous amount of contracts. And I was happy to hear that, uh, there's a protocol in place, and then in the end, before the contracts are executed by all parties, they are rubber stamped by our legal department, correct?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's a formal protocol?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, I think that's it. Um, keep getting those grants. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you so much. That's it. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
What? Ashley's coming up.
Oh, we've got another, uh.
Doubleheader.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, um, and City Council. So, uh, the next department is our Community and Library Services Department. Our, um, Community and Library Services Department Director, Ashley Wysocki, will provide the department overview.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. In 2020, as part of the city's separation incentive program, the Community Services Department and the Library Services Department were combined into a single department. Before you this evening is a presentation on the Community and Library Services budget. In fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, our general fund budget totaled sixteen million dollars, which with sixty-eight point five percent allocated towards personnel and thirty-one point five percent allocated towards operating. Our revenues in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five are estimated to exceed our general fund allocations with a total projection of twenty-four point nine million dollars. Parking and camping is estimated to generate eighteen point two million with a two point five, with two point five million of this as a result of our newly formed parking citation team, supporting the opportunity to combine resources across multiple departments to deliver a single service. Recreation and events generates fourteen percent of our revenues, which includes approximately eighty contract class instructors and permit fees generated from specific events. Agreements and leases generate nine percent of revenue, and finally, our rental program generates three percent of department revenue. And in, and in subsequent slides, I will provide additional data to support this information. Community and Library Services is comprised of five divisions with sixty-three point two-five full-time equivalents and an average of two hundred and seventy-five part-time employees and eight hundred and fifty-nine volunteers. As programming increases in the summer peak season, so does our part-time team. The Administration Division operates the long-range planning, budgeting, contract management, and development of public-private partnerships with corporations, agencies, and nonprofits. Our team is also responsible for liaising with approximately sixteen boards, commissions, and committees, many of which our council members also serve as liaisons for as well. Specific Events and Rentals coordinates the permitting process for our large-scale events, such as the US Open, Air Show, and Surf City Marathon. In addition to overseeing rentals at our four clubhouses, bounce house permits, and other special events for smaller-scale events, such as weddings and nonprofit walks. This fiscal year, we also assumed responsibility of film permitting. Facilities and Development plans and recommends rehabilitation of our seventy-nine parks, sixty-one playgrounds, and twenty-two department facilities. Of these facilities, eight operate through agreements by third-party concessionaires on the beach and in Central Park. This division also oversees agreements for the Sports Complex and Metal Arc Golf Course. In total, we operate seventeen lease and license agreements through this division, generating approximately two point two million dollars annually. Another large operation is the management and oversight of the city's beach parking and camping division, which spans from the Beach Boulevard to Seapoint and any metered parking along beach, PCH, and the downtown area. Annually, from Labor Day to Memorial Day, a portion of the beach parking lot transforms into our Huntington Beach RV campground. Programs and Services provides year-round activities, community events, and contract classes as offered through the HB Sands, uh, Recreation Brochure. This division operates programs such as youth sports, Camp HB, and year-round aquatics, and provides facility rentals at City Gym and Pool, Murdy and Edison Community Centers, and the Senior Center in Central Park. The Senior Center in Central Park provides recreational programs, the membership-based Hoag Wellness Pavilion, and social services programming, including Surf City Seniors On-the-Go Transportation, Care Management, and Social Services, Social Worker Services, and a home-delivered meals program. The Library and Cultural Services Division operates the Huntington Beach Art Center, Central Library, and the four library branches throughout our city. Art Exhibitions and Arts Education, Youth and Family Programming, Community Outreach, and Literacy Services are primary offerings, in addition to development of various contracts with organizations like the Veterans Resource Center and OC Genealogical Society. Central Library also offers various facility rentals, including the Library Theater we are in this evening. As, I, as a result of combining the Community Services and Libraries team, we consistently seek out opportunities to combine resources and reduce costs to provide community events. In addition to the data listed on this slide, it is also worth mentioning the following. We process seventy-five special permits and sixty film shoots annually with an average of four major film shoots. As of March twenty-fifth, rentable recreation facilities have hosted just over twelve hundred rentals that have generated five hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue, a forty-three percent increase from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, with a few months till to go in this fiscal year. For sports field rentals, as of March twenty-fifth, generated revenue sits at approximately eighty-nine thousand dollars with, uh, from two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven field rentals. A seven percent increase from last fiscal year heading into spring baseball season, which is the busiest season for our field rentals. Between, uh, or during this fiscal year, uh, seventeen hundred and ninety events were hosted by library, by the library. And so far from this fiscal year, um, eleven, eleven, one thousand, I'm sorry. This fiscal year, one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven events have been held at the library, with a hundred and eight of these events being revenue-generating rentals with, um, that typically take from two to fourteen days per rental. Approximately eight thousand beach parking passes were sold, and we have provided parking for just over eight hundred and forty-nine thousand vehicles in the beach lots and main promenade parking structure. As of February twenty-twenty-five, four hundred and eighty-one library volunteers have provided just over thirteen thousand hour, uh, volunteer hours. And senior center volunteers have provided just over twenty-six thousand hours of service. This does not include hours from approximately a hundred and thirty-three library support volunteers, who additionally have provided thirteen thousand hours, and senior center support volunteers who have provided over two thousand hours. Department volunteers provide services such as literacy, home-delivered meals, senior transportation, teen volunteers, um, circulation, shelving, and branch volunteers. There are currently sixty-nine thousand active library cardholders, and, uh, this year, we typically circulate about eight hundred and forty-six thousand items annually. As we look into the future for efficiencies and cost savings, we continue to review and update existing MOUs and agreements, in addition to exploring other opportunities to enter into new agreements. We have a goal to develop a one-stop shop for our rentals, where customers can complete rental applications online or visit any of our public-facing facilities to help facilitate the process for any location. We are also exploring a reservation light option, where patrons looking for general meeting space can walk in and use an available room for a nominal cost. We continue to conduct fee assessments for surrounding, uh, of surrounding cities, providing similar services to ensure we are at or exceed market rate, proposing fee increases for city council consideration annually. We also continue to evaluate our physical landscape to be more event-friendly. A great example is the removal of the light poles in the middle of the beach parking lot to provide more flexible space for event setups for our specific events. And within the department, we have established the previously mentioned beach parking enforcement team to assist the police department with providing customer service and issuing citations. We are also proposing to bring our contracted event facility rental security guards in-house to generate additional revenue. Based on current rentals, we anticipate generating an additional thirty thousand dollars as a result of that change. Contracting out the Huntington Beach Sports Complex has generated a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars in revenue annually and proves to be a successful model. Staff are currently exploring companies who may be able to provide a similar operational model for the Library's theater and have a goal to issue an RFP this calendar year. Additionally, the recent technology upgrades made in, made in this theater, um, make the theater attractive, more attractive for future rental customers and provides additional revenue generation opportunities. Finally, we are always looking to expand our contract class program in our facilities, on the beach, and in our park spaces, in addition to garnering additional sponsorships, donations, and grants to offset and enhance our programs. We currently have a resolution which provides guidelines for park naming, including the opportunity to name amenities and parkland if a business or entity, entity offers to sponsor the space, pending city council approval. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to share information on our department. We are honored to make Huntington Beach a wonderful place to live, work, and most importantly, create community and memories through our programs and facilities. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Casey.
Thank you, Ashley. Can you actually go back to that previous slide? So I feel, uh, your department has the biggest potential to bring in more revenue and potentially reduce expenditures. So obviously with the MOU agreements, you know, we've talked about that, that, that needs to be tightened up, just like our leases, to make sure everything's tight and the city's got its best financial, uh, foot forward. Um, can you kind of walk through that one-stop shop for facility rentals? Can you give a little more detail on what that is?
Sure. So currently, um, we're a little disjointed. Each division has facilities that can be rented, but there isn't one complete system for that. And so what we're looking for is a system. Um, we have a couple of, uh, meetings coming up with technology, um, companies, who may be able to offer, um, a system where I can walk into the library, say I need a rental space for a hundred people for my wedding, and we can go, okay, we don't have something available here, but here are all of the other spaces. but here are all of the other spaces we can rent for you. And walk them through that. In addition to, I was at a conference a couple of weeks ago, and there's a tech company that is, the city and the tech company strive to reduce the volume of people who are coming into the public facilities to sign up and register and rent facilities. And so through the work of this company and this city, they actually went from, I think, a 40% people walking through doors all the way down to a 1% because it's so much more fast and it's faster and more efficient for people to just do it from their phones. So they went from nearly nobody using their mobile device to now over 60% using their mobile devices to register for programs and rent facilities.
Yeah, that's great, because I know when we talked initially about doing the one-stop shop, and then we realized streamlined was the better approach to kind of streamline our permitting, but the one-stop shop was still implemented for you guys. We had a lot of meetings in Chamber of Commerce and then a business roundtable where groups were frustrated that we really couldn't fill their requests on a last-minute basis. So stuff like this now is integrating with our businesses and our facilities and our assets to make sure that we always have an option for a group that wants to come in, especially convention groups with the hotels, to provide these rooms for them here. I always thought this is great convention space. It kind of dovetails into the two down the beach park fighting reconfiguration. We had a group come in last year to do a rodeo. We're hopeful to come in next year. And they wanted to remove a light pole in the parking lot south of the pier because we're trying to populate the calendar on city beach, not on state beach, but the city beach with first-class events throughout the year. Hopefully get these great events like the air show, like Darker Waves, the rodeo, groups like that to really come in and be a staple here. And we've had really good means with the hotels to really maximize that space in that parking lot south of the pier and then make sure that they're bringing in conventions to fill the hotels. They're having events in that parking lot. We're not sending them outside to state beach like Sea Legs, which a lot of those groups do. So we're really trying to synchronize all of our departments. And Parks and Library Services is a big one. So if we have this one-stop shop and streamlined process along with the hotels and our businesses, we can really synchronize these groups to really maximize efficiency and the city, which is huge. Touch on, let's see, going down a little bit on the contracted services. So you touched on this room in general. We've talked about it before, but to really maximize the space. Pat and I talked with a gentleman that used to fill this room with first-class events. So we're pursuing that as well, right? Getting more events here for the community. And you said we upgraded the technology in here to make it a little bit attractive, right?
Correct, yes. So there have been upgrades to the technology here. There's now inputs for people to be able to livestream. There's additional recording devices. So if people wanted to come in and record a performance and then subsequently use it later, there are opportunities for us to be able to assess fees for those types of services.
And then the last one on that same bullet point. We've had a lot of groups, a handful of groups reach out in terms of dog beach. You know, for the Corgi Beach Day, there's some dog, really cool dog food vending trucks, like dog food trucks that come down for the dogs. And so we're looking at doing an RFP to just activate that dog beach area year-round and not just for Corgi Beach Day. So do you know when that RFP might be getting ready to come up?
We're still working on that one. But I do know we have a goal to not only activate Corgi, or I'm sorry, Corgi Beach, Dog Beach, but also strategically place concessions like food trucks along the beach path on state beach, where currently there aren't any concessions. So our goal is to move everything north of the pier. That way then there isn't a competing interest with all of our current concessions south of the pier.
Perfect. So that was the revenue side on the expenditure side. I have some ideas, but do you have any thoughts on how we can reduce expenditures for your guys' department?
So we continue to look at those opportunities. There are some, if we were to look at, currently we have a park ranger program that is contracted. So while they do help provide customer service, there is an opportunity there to really evaluate, is it something in collaboration with the Police Department? That there's a better way to offer that service. We're also looking at our current contracted security guards. And we have the customers, it's a third-party group. And so the customers pay for those required security guards. We see an opportunity to develop a security team in-house and have those staff staff those events, and then we charge. So we're recouping the revenue versus a third-party group. Additionally, as far as other cost savings go, when our buildings are functioning, there are rental opportunities. So we do have to assess the cost-benefit there if we have reduced hours, and that means we have reduced revenue generation. So those are all things that we are trying to continue to evaluate and look at opportunities across the board.
We've touched on it, but really would like to, correct me if you're not, I think we are doing it, but pursue the private-public partnerships as it relates to our park and potentially look at some sponsorships. You know, I live by Edison Park, so Edison Park powered by Edison, to offload a lot of those maintenance cost expenditures on our parks, because we have, what, 79 parks?
We have 79 parks, yes.
Right. So if there's ability to pursue where tasteful and responsibly some, you know, maybe Republic or some good local businesses that want to look at potentially sponsoring our parks to offload some of that, like that park maintenance expenditure would be ideal. I know I talked to Travis about it, but I really like to pursue that.
Right. And just a little bit of a forecast into our Community and Library Services Commission meeting this month. We will be developing an ad hoc committee to help us develop a very robust adopt-a-park program. Because we do recognize that our parks are very well-loved by our community, and we have groups like the Tree Society who are very, very well-developed in their volunteerism, all the way down to the neighbor who just wants to walk through the park and help pick up some trash or maybe do some weed. So we want to develop a more robust program, which then will also help offset maintenance requirements or maintenance costs that Public Works has and continue to beautify and enhance our public spaces.
Thank you. Awesome.
Don?
Thanks, Ashley. One quick question on the beach passes. I know I used to buy that all the time. Is it still sold as just an annual pass?
Yes.
Okay. Have you guys thought about, what is the cost now for the annual pass?
I think it's $195, but don't quote me.
So have you thought about maybe also offering like a seasonal one for the summertime? You know, a lot of these moms might not necessarily want to buy the full year, but they certainly might want to buy, you know, those three, four summer months at, you know, paraded or some kind of a discount. I think you could probably sell some of those to a lot of the families that don't buy the annual pass. So maybe consider that. One other question. So Butch and I met with some Huntington Valley Little League parents, dads, that are also active in the Little League. And we're a little disheartened to hear that, you know, in this day and age, it's one thing if your family can't afford club sports because that is expensive. But, you know, like the Little Leagues, the AYSOs, in your case, the camps, we were told their kids have to kind of sit on the sideline. And they're working on some programs to make sure what we call "everybody plays." Do you have any ideas or any kind of help for a family that wants to put their kids in some of these summer programs that just don't have the resources?
So we currently do not have a scholarship program. Last month, our Community and Library Services Commissioner Baker brought forward the idea of us looking into developing such a program. And so I've worked in various cities that have through different funding mechanisms, something like that. So our team right now is actively looking into are there opportunities for either service organizations to help develop a seed fund for something like that. I've also, in a previous city, used Community Development Block Grant, CDVG funds for something like that. So there are opportunities. We just need to figure out which methods make the most sense so that we are all not tapping into the same generous donors.
Got it. So on an average cost to go to one of these camps, you know, there's a lot of camps. What do you think the average cost is for these summer camps for per kid? The reason I ask is if you had an average cost, you could go out to, you know, people that have money and say, listen, it's 100 bucks a kid or whatever. So for, you know, 10,000 bucks, you can sponsor 1,000 kids, you know, just throwing arbitrary numbers out. But what is an average cost?
For our in-house-delivered Camp HB program, it's $195. And we actually, last year only, we had to double the camp size because the waitlist was about 100 kids per week. So it is a very popular program. This year, we're expanding a half-day sports program to Edison Park. So we're constantly looking at how do we make sure that we have varying styles of summer camps because we recognize parents need places for their children to go during the summer, and we want to offer multiple versions. So a half-day, a full-day, a three-quarter day, a couple of hours here and there. So we want to make sure that we offer something for everyone so that there is something within somebody's budget range. And when we offer in-house city programs, we're able to control those costs. But for our third-party contract class instructors, those instructors, we cannot affect, we cannot dictate what their costs can be, but we do take a percentage split, typically 70/30 from those contractors.
Yeah, the main target would be the city-controlled projects. But okay, thank you. Something to think about.
Butch?
Real quick. Thank you for your report, Ashley. It was very good. Not to put you on the spot or anything, but is there anything you want to unveil tonight? Like on a revenue-generating initiative that your department's looking at? Any surprises that you can tell us?
I don't, would you like to tell us?
Not to put you on the spot. That's all right. Does your department have its own dedicated grant writer?
We do not, no. But we do have, I'll flip to, that's a good segue into this final slide. We do collect a number of grants. And so our library team is remarkable at securing grants. But no, in-house dedicated grant writer, we do not. It is not necessarily my forte, but there are many staff on our team who are wonderful storytellers. And especially in the library team, they're able to secure grants quite often for extensions of programs and services.
Excellent. My apologies for putting you in. Because, you know, all of us up here are continuously and constantly looking for new sources of revenue to balance our budget. So I figured I'd just ask you if there's anything great coming along, you know, that we...
I can go back to that previous slide.
Thank you. You're doing a great job, and I appreciate you.
Anybody else? Okay. That does it then for presentations, right?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Ash. Okay, now we move on to the consent calendar. Travis already pulled 25.6-266. We have items nine through 14. Does anybody want to pull any?
I'll make a motion to approve the items.
Okay, I'll second. Clerk, can you please call roll?
Who was the second?
Pardon me?
The second? Councilman Twine?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protemekian?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Item passes, seven, zero.
Mayor, can I point out one quick thing? It's got zero buried on the vote.
Sure.
Okay. Just a little transposing on item 12 in the year three, section three on the compensations. There was just some transposing on the agreement. In the wording, it says 283,200. And numerically, instead of 483,000 in the contract, it says 438. So they transpose the 38 and the 83. So if somebody would want to true up, I just happened to notice that as I was rereading that today. So, yeah, clean that up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to item 15, the public hearing. As a reminder, the public hearing was continued and remained open from March 18th. Does anybody have any ex parte communications close on item 15? Staff, please do the report, please.
Hi, good evening. Mayor Burns and members of the City Council. Waiting for my item to pull up there. All right. So again, good evening. The item before you is a request for a zoning text amendment to amend the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance. This amendment is largely focused on regulating smoke and tobacco retail stores within the city. It'll specifically amend, four chapters will be amended with this ZTA or zoning text amendment. Three of them would be to introduce regulations for the smoke and tobacco shops. And the idea is to define what uses would be subject to these regulations, add regulations to prevent an over-concentration of smoke and tobacco shops in the city, and to reduce exposure to residential areas, hospitals, or areas frequented by children. The ZTA also includes a cleanup item for chapter 212 of the zoning subdivision ordinance to remove duplicate tech. You'll see it in your packet as one of the ordinances does not cover smoking regulation. It's for that reason. It's just a cleanup item that we wanted to take advantage of this moment to take care of. So just a quick background. The most regulations, many jurisdictions have provided additional regulations for smoke or tobacco shops. They've introduced certain, they've restricted like what retailers can sell, where retailers may be located at, and counter efforts to attract new or younger customers. Currently, the way the zoning code is written, they are currently permitted in areas that allow just retail uses. So in September of last year, staff was directed by this council to draft the necessary amendments to the zoning code to define and add regulations for smoke or tobacco shops within the city to prevent the spread and cluster of smoke and tobacco shops specifically near youth-populated areas. So the text amendment was presented to the Planning Commission on February 11th, where it was approved and forwarded to the City Council with some modifications. So draft ordinances with all legislative drafts of the amendments to each chapter have been provided. I'm going to cover the amendments that are related to smoke and tobacco shops. The first amendment is in chapter 204 under the use classification for retail sales. The use classification for retail sales was amended to specify or to include smoke and tobacco shops in order to identify this use and determine what uses may be sold under this use classification. Then the next amendment is in chapter 211, section 211.04. This is the land use control table for commercial uses, and it was amended to reflect the zones where smoke or tobacco shops may be permitted subject to these new regulations. To address concerns with high concentrations of smoke and tobacco shops adjacent to residential and youth-populated areas, new regulations were added to chapter 230 of the zoning ordinance, the zoning code. So new definitions were added to list the items that can be sold in these shops. It defines what is classified as a youth-populated area, which we defined as being pre-K, so 12, like high school and under, childcare facilities, libraries, parks, youth centers such as the Boys and Girls Club or like the YMCA. The other thing that we've covered is limiting them to commercial zones. They're currently, retail is only allowed in commercial zones. We specify that these uses are only limited to commercial zones, not allowed in any residential, specifically residential areas, and will continue to be allowed in zones where they're currently allowed. And then we've introduced separation requirements. Separation requirements from hospitals in these newly-defined youth-populated areas. They are going to be separated by 1,000 feet. We've also required that other smoke and tobacco shops maintain 1,000-foot separation distance. Then we've added window and lighting standards to ensure that windows are not covered more than 20%, which is consistent with our zoning code at the moment, and that adequate lighting is available to see the interior of the store from the outside. Clear signage will be required to be posted in these shops to prohibit unaccompanied minors from entering these businesses. Smoking on the premises is also prohibited with this amendment. And then the final amendment that we're adding is non-conforming shops will be permitted to return or to remain, excuse me, unless that smoke or tobacco shop changes the use or it's abandoned or discontinued for at least six months. And there's a section in our code that addresses non-conforming use. So basically, if a non-conforming smoke or tobacco shop goes away for more than six months, it can't go back. It would have to abide by these new regulations. Therefore, staff is recommending, staff along with the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this zoning text amendment based on the fact that it's consistent with the general plan's goals and policies and that it cleans up the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance to improve clarity by removing that duplicate tech. And it also addresses community needs to prevent the proliferation and cluster of smoke and tobacco retailers particularly near youth-populated areas. This concludes staff's presentations and will be available for any comments.
Thank you. Casey?
Thank you, Joanna. This is my little tobacco baby that we've been working on since last year. So the genesis of this was that some residents expressed concern about overproliferation of tobacco shops. The example where I live, if you're coming from Costa Mesa, down Victoria, that turns into Hamilton, at Burkehurst in Hamilton on the southwest corner, there's a brand-new tobacco shop next to the Basilico's right there on the corner. You go right around to the backside of the building, and there's an old existing tobacco shop that's still there. And also the sensitivity of actually distance to sensitive areas like Edison High School. So I feel you guys did an amazing job addressing all of that. Talked about, in that situation, if one of those businesses were to go out for six months or change use, then one of them can no longer go back because they, right? And then what was the amendments that the Planning Commission made? Was it the distance, right?
Correct. We initially proposed 500 feet distance requirements for new between other... We initially proposed 500-feet distance requirements for new, between other smoke shops and then more youth-populated areas, and they felt that, based on the way, and we were measuring from parcel line to parcel line.
Right.
And they felt that, depending on a, if we had like an odd-shaped parcel or multiple parcels like in a shopping center, they felt that some, we would be able to, more tobacco shops could probably go into a commercial center than you would normally see in like a typically-defined parcel, you know, just like one parcel type of commercial center.
So basically, like, yeah, so basically, let's say like Brookhurst and Adams, that big intersection there, you could really only have maybe one on one corner, right? So there'd be like one tobacco shop at that intersection. Questions came up, just want to clarify, so other retailers, like grocery stores, can still sell tobacco? This wouldn't apply to them? It's basically like tobacco-only retail shop, right?
Correct. Yes, there is, there's some outs for like grocery stores, like a Walgreens, CVS, they have outs.
Okay, cool. And then I love the signage was a big thing, so can you kind of bring that slide back up?
Sure.
So just, obviously has to be really visible looking into it, and then those signs have to be posted correctly on the windows?
They, they are limited to 20%, so they can only cover, they can't cover more than 20%.
But I'm saying like the notice, the children's sign has to be prominent?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, I think you guys did a great job, you know, kind of wargaming this and make sure that all the holes are plugged, so I think it was great.
You got it?
Yep.
All right. We're going to open it up for the public comments. Do we have anybody to speak for this?
Yes, we have two speakers.
We have two speakers. If you, please step up, and I'll read this. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on this item scheduled for the public hearing may do so by filling out the request form. Already done. All speakers are encouraged but not required to identify themselves by name. Each speaker may have up to three minutes unless the volume of speakers warrants, but we'll give you each three minutes for both of you. Thank you. Amory, if you signed up, come on up. Anybody else?
Yes, there was Adriano Maldonado.
He might have left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight in support of item 15, Councilman McKeon's Tobacco Regulation Zoning Text Amendment. This zoning text amendment will reduce the accessibility of cigarettes to a younger audience. The zoning text amendment will hopefully deter another generation of smokers in Huntington Beach. Once again, I urge a yes vote on item 15. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Maldonado last call? All right, then we will close the public hearing at this time. And would any other council members like to discuss this? Any comments? Butch? Oh, okay, surprise. Don?
I'd just like to commend Councilman McKeon on this as well, well overdue and completely necessary. Great job, buddy.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Clerk, please call the vote.
I have McKeon for the first. Vandermark for the second. Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. We're going to move on to item 16.
Wait, I have to.
Oh. Oh, yeah, you got to read it, that's right.
For the record, I'd like to read the ordinance titles for introduction. Ordinance number 4331, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, amending chapter 204, use classifications of the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance, zoning text amendment number 25-001. Ordinance number 4334, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, amending chapter 211C, commercial districts of the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance, zoning text amendment number 25-001. Ordinance number 4333, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, amending chapter 212I, industrial districts of the Huntington Beach zoning and subdivision ordinance, zoning text amendment number 25-001. Ordinance number 4332, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Huntington Beach, amending chapter 230, site standards of the Huntington Beach zoning code and the subdivision ordinance zoning text amendment number 25-001.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to item 16. Submitted by myself and Casey McKeon, but we'll continue on the Casey Show.
Thanks, man. Mayor. So since we've been elected, we've been going through every department trying to fuse the private sector into government. And outside of Public Works, we've noticed on the contract side, there's some gaps in protocol that we need to fix. And so this H item is to basically create a milestone-based payment policy, but that involves making payments at predefined stages of the project or work specified in the agreement. And then each milestone represents a key stage of work that has been completed and approved. And by breaking down these payments into milestones, both the city and the vendors can manage risk more effectively. And then key benefits of these milestone payments include reducing financial risk. So for the city, milestone payments minimize the risk of paying too much upfront for work that may not be completed. For the contractor or service provider, milestone payments ensure compensation as a project progresses, rather than waiting for a lump sum at the end. Importantly, ensuring accountability and progress, so milestones act as progress checkpoints. Contractors are incentivized to meet specific objectives before receiving payment, encouraging them to stay on schedule and maintain high-quality work. And then lastly, this improves cash flow. Milestone payments provide a steady stream of payables and receivables, avoiding the need to wait for a large payment at the project's conclusion. So when entering into contracts for large projects, it's beneficial to include provisions for progress payments tied to specific milestones. So the recommended action I'd like to move is direct staff to create a milestone payment policy. Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody, any questions on this? All right, I'd like to move the item.
Okay.
All right, we have a first and a second. Myself and Mayor Protem McKeon. And call the roll.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Gruhl?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?